To call this city council meeting of December 28th to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Orchowski?
Present.
Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Councilman Greger?
Present.
Mayor motion?
Present.
Mayor, we note a forum of five members.
At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Custer to leave us in a prayer.
Sure. Amen. Let's take a moment here and I really feel to give thanks tonight. Let's give thanks. Lord, we're grateful for the many good things that have happened in this year. Optimistic, good things. I just remember at this time last year, right now, there was a severe storm here. And we asked that the city just remain running. And not one person had to leave their home because of that storm. We're grateful for that. Grateful. And we look around at our city being repaired. The underground work there, the sewer work is just amazing. It's progressing. We thank you for these things. And the buildings disappearing. The decaying buildings that are going away. We're so grateful for these things. And we're grateful also for the challenges. We embrace them. We thank you for them because they make us stronger. We have to work together and figure stuff out. So tonight, I'm asking you for wisdom. I ask you to bless all the staff here, the mayor and all the staff, all the council members, all the citizens here who are interested enough to be here. I pray for wisdom to be upon all of us. Let your great blessing just move this city forward as you had in this last year. We're so, so grateful. And Lord, I just ask these things. There'll be many more requests to come. I just ask these things now because of your amazing, undying love for this city and for the people here. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to skip the approval minutes. We don't have them for council approval. So I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
The big question is, I see all these transfer of funds, Councilwoman Tony, and where they all coming from to make payment for all these invoices?
Gee, the only transfer I know of is, besides payroll, that always happens.
General fund?
The, we took, we took money that was chargeable back from Liquid Fuels and put it back into the general fund because it was owed from the general fund.
How much was that?
Hundred thousand dollars.
And where else? General fund too?
I'm not aware you're seeing anything else. I mean, there's the art money for the fire departments, but...
Okay, on page four, there's a from the general account in the amount of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-two thousand. Page four on the top, A.
Motion to pay a minimum of a general account loan.
Those are invoices.
Yeah, paying invoices.
That's the invoices. That's our regular bills.
Okay, all I ask is from where the money's come from. The general account one, the art money? You've been using that because last time you...
No, we haven't used it at all yet, but we will use it tonight.
And then this, this hundred thousand that you just said?
Hundred thousand was a transfer from Liquid Fuels back to the general fund because it was money owed. When there was money, no money in Liquid Fuels to pay Liquid Fuels' bills, the general fund paid it.
Okay, so we have no other account that you're taking money from?
No.
So that's it? We relying on those only?
We're relying on everything. I'm going to give you a list of that I do every meeting. Things, different things come out of different pots, Ernie. I mean, it's not changed.
I'm just trying to identify where these funds are coming from.
Same place they've always come from.
Yeah, but I see a lot more invoices now.
It says following invoices from the general account in the amount of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Yeah.
Those are all these that don't change every, twice a month.
Okay, so going now, this is the last month. Where are we now?
I'll give you a report when I get to my, when I get to my part.
Okay.
Nothing else? Let's continue. Does anybody have any correspondence they'd like to talk about? You got something else for the agenda?
Um, I went to the last meeting with, you were there, the mayor was. And there was confusion about grants and how they work. If the grant isn't completely used, what happens to it? Are they set up differently?
Every grant's different, but that needs to be, this is questions on agenda items. We can get to general questions at the end.
Okay, are we gonna open up for that discussion?
At the end.
All right, thank you.
Okay. There's no old business. I'd like Heather Sliss's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. For tonight, you'll see a motion on the agenda for the tax anticipation note for next year. I did get a chance to send that to council early this afternoon. I received it late afternoon, but everything is in order. It's in accordance to the proposal that council accepted at the last meeting. There is one document that every member of council needs to sign. Just make sure you guys sign that before you leave tonight. The rest, the resolution authorizes the mayor and Mr. Orchowski to sign all the other documents. The closing on the TAN note will be sometime in the first weekend in January. That's all I have.
Thank you. Don't have our treasurer here tonight?
He's given his report.
Okay.
As has the city control at the last meeting.
Correct, I did last...
Anybody have any new business they'd like to bring forth?
No, Mayor.
Well, go ahead. I'd like to bring something up that might be thought about for, I hope it's gonna be next year unfortunately. And as something I'd like the new council next year to consider. And as we've all talked for this whole year about art money. And we've batted different things around. We've batted things on how to spend it, how not to spend it, what was the best thing for the city, for its residents. We looked at paving. We looked at pothole. We looked at a lot of things. And I've thought about this, and this is a suggestion I'd like to make towards the new council next year, is we have two hundred, as I'll report, it didn't change, we have, where is it at? Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents in the art. And what I'd like to propose for everybody to think about is to take sixty-five thousand and use it to identify either one of the, whatever street happens to be one of the worst in the city, whether it be Evergreen, it happens to be somewhere else. I can't, I don't drive around, so I don't know, except for the main streets. But I think we should take, the council should take sixty-five grand and earmark it for that purpose. I'd like to take another sixty-five thousand dollars and earmark it for a new police vehicle. So that takes us to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I'd like to consider everybody to earmark seventy thousand dollars for a new vehicle for the street department. It'll be a little bit more than that, but that'll pay for ninety, over ninety percent of it almost. That takes us to two-hundred thousand dollars. Tonight, we're going to be able to allocate fifteen thousand to both fire departments. So that's thirty thousand. And that'll leave us roughly eight thousand, as I said, eight thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, give or take. And I'd like council maybe to consider, we bounced around early at the beginning of the year, the thing about maybe having something like movies in the park or what we could use to better facilitate the amphitheater, that we don't use that resource that's sitting there. Whether you were for it or were you were against it, it doesn't quite matter. It's there, and it's just rotting away. So I would like to use that additional eight thousand in some way, shape, or form to kickstart, do something as a thought or idea to spend that remaining eight grand. So, yes?
You can ask questions at the end.
But real quick, to answer your question, and I apologize, Mayor, if that's okay. Ron?
Yes.
Is it all right if I, real quick?
Please.
Okay, thank you. The, I mean, the only criteria one is probably number one and number four, or five. The, what to do with the amphitheater and what streets or street is the worst in Menneson that we could tackle first? Whether it's been brought to this council, Evergreen, or other places have been brought, you know? I don't have an answer for that, but I'd like to throw that out there, that that's probably the top one or two or things that we've talked about. But that's something I'd like to propose publicly for the next council to consider if they may want to. They may not want to and go a completely different direction. I can't tell you that. But I thought I would just bring that up on the new business, Mayor.
Very good. I think that's a lot of things to think about. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And then it's gone.
Actually, your ideas aren't that out of line, and the council coming up should be considering that. And I understand earmarking sixty-five thousand, but that's gonna kind of limit you on the amount of streets that you can get done.
But even if it is decided it's Evergreen, that will pay ninety-some, eighty or ninety percent of it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree. And it's really, certainly that's one of the streets that you can't do with CDBG money.
So why not, we consider doing it with that?
And if you really think about the three worst streets in Menneson, one would be the one that the mayor showed me the other day, Crest Extension.
Yes.
That probably could be done with CDBG money. Also, Nash Avenue is probably the second worst, and again, you could do that with CDBG money. And Evergreen is a street that you can't do with CDBG money, unfortunately. But that'll be up to the next council to decide. I'm just glad we got the ball rolling on it.
Yeah, and the other thing, you know, the thing for the street department, I've looked into a new truck for the, you gentlemen, and they're gonna run around with an aluminum, with a aluminum bed dump, five-fifty F-150, no, no, one-fifty, I'm sorry, five-fifty.
Five-fifty.
Okay. They're down at Allegheny Trucks down near the downtown, near the river down there. This is gonna be around, with Coast Stars, it's gonna be around ninety grand. So...
With Coast Stars?
With Coast Stars.
Holy cow.
So seventy thousand, we should be able to use easy for it. So if we have to do twenty thousand, and I mean, there's a lot of flexibility we can possibly do. So that's what I wanted to earmark. I don't wanna go on and bore you anymore. But those are some of, just some ideas I came up with. I wanted to present to this council and next council.
Thank you. I'd like to take a couple of minutes and talk about some of the things that took place the last couple of weeks. First off, I hope everybody enjoyed as good a Christmas as I did. I also hope you remembered why we have Christmas at all. There are a few issues around town, but mostly seem to, most people seem to enjoy the Christmas spirit. There's lots of families visiting. All we needed to do was drive through and look at the residential streets, all the cars parked on the side of the road. A lot of people were visiting. That was a good thing. This year marked the one-twenty-fifth anniversary of Menneson. It was a great opportunity for those that grew up here, along with those who came to love more Menneson more recently, to learn about the very rich history of Menneson. Just as an example, in eighteen ninety-six and eighteen ninety-seven, Mr. Schoonmaker worked with the railroad to move tracks closer to the river. By nineteen oh-one, city council budgeted four thousand sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents to construct a five, to construct the Fifth Street Storm drain that goes to the river. Think about that. Four thousand dollars to do the Fifth Street Storm drain. With the help of Delmar Heppel, we dug up some maps at the city garage that showed this. Clearly, they proposed a thirty-six inch storm sewer to the river in the early years of nineteen hundred. Storm water pipes were laid to the river. I'm just speculating, but land was very important back then, and right-of-ways and easements were taken very seriously, just as they are today. But it's also very curious to me how the city put two eighty-four inch double and triple line brick lines, along with three other lines underneath the railroad. How do you do that? Eighty-four inch pipeline, that's one you can stand up, hold your arms up, and you still can't touch the sides of. This is a huge pipe underneath the railroad. How do you do that? Well, clearly, the only thing I can really come up with is Mr. Schoonmaker and Mr. Donner were both very politically and financially well-off. Did they just simply tell the railroad, that's what we're gonna do, and they just did it? Take down, stop the railroad and put the line in and just do it? I don't know. I don't think we'll ever know. But if somebody is, nobody's around to tell us what happened at that time. The Historical Society has council notes and so forth that I've been reading and history, and it's, it's all very interesting. But I still don't have an answer. And the CNX nor us have any documentation that has easements or right-of-ways for these pipes. So that's going to be something that we've already talked to CNX about. There's still a lot to talk to be, to continue with that. But we've got to, we've got five crossings of that railroad, and we have to line those pipes. One of the things that became very interesting was one of the thirty-six inch lines that goes down Fifth Street runs directly underneath Cleveland Cliff's property. In fact, it runs directly underneath the coke ovens. Those coke ovens are valued at seven-hundred-and-fifty million. And I said million, not thousand, million dollars. That is what that business is across the tracks. It produces the coke, and that's the oven that does it. He was, of course, very interested to find out that there is a thirty-six inch line that runs underneath that coke oven. Well, we have the opportunity now with what we're doing with the USDA to fix these lines. We're lining them with the cast-in-place concrete and various other techniques, depending on the size of the line, in order to give us another fifty to a hundred years more service on them. But how bad is it underneath this, this coke oven? That was a question that we were presented with. So the first thing that happened, we put a camera down this line. It came across some bricks. They got around the bricks, goes around a corner, and it gets hung up. They can't get it. They actually have a steel cable tied to it. They dragged the camera back. It destroyed the camera. Still gotta figure out how we're gonna get this. Believe it or not, a GoPro and somebody with more guts than I've got climbed into this thirty-six inch line and crawled down the line, some nine-hundred feet, with a GoPro camera photographing what this line looked like. What it turns out is that it's amazingly better, much better shape than anybody really anticipated. There are places where, it's a double line brick line, two, two layers of bricks, hand-laid to form this pipe. That's the way they did this pipe in the year nineteen hundred. It's still in amazingly good shape. There are a few places where bricks have come down and there needs to be repaired, but it's something that it can be serviced, even today. They can go in with their cast-in-place concrete, and they can service this line. So that's something that's very positive and something that came out this, this last week, the last couple of weeks, that I think is very important to know about. Which brings us to the work that's going on in Schoonmaker. Now bear in mind that most of the work that they did on Schoonmaker was PNG gas. And that was because they were ordered by PUC to make sure that their lines don't rupture and go boom in the middle of the night and cause major problems. That the lines were very old. They were done in the same period as this. That they had to assure that they were right. PNG, much to my dismay, scheduled it to their liking and not to the city's liking, but they came in and they started digging up Schoonmaker and redoing all these gas lines. And there's numerous problems that came with that, but I think they're gonna stand behind all the problems that they created. So here we gets to be pretty cold. They were working right up until, I believe it was last week, and they finally said, it's getting too cold. We can't do anymore. They put hot patch over all the spots that they had tore up, and they walked away from it until the springtime, which, which time they will come back, and they will do the restoration where they will fix it, the same way that they fixed the road from Fourth Street to, to Ninth Street. The first phase of that. They've already done the restoration there. So from Fourth Street to Oneida, we're gonna have to put up with until springtime when they, they can do the hot patch and do the paving and everything they're, they really supposed to do. But also remember, last meeting we had, we talked about an emergency that took place on Schoonmaker between Second and Third Street. This is where a manhole started caving in. When they removed the manhole cover, they noticed that the vault had disintegrated. There's not much left to it. It's in horrible shape. To be honest, we were quite lucky that our engineers did, took, looked at this and determined this before a bus or a truck fell into this. It would have been quite ugly to see a truck stuck in a major vault in the middle of a road. The bottom line is, they've gone out for contract on this. I expect that, they've already done the one calls on it. I suspect next week, they're supposed to receive the vault. There's gonna be a couple of days where they're going to dig up a big hole right there between Second and Third Street on Schoonmaker and install a new vault there and get this all where it can survive again for another, hopefully, a hundred-plus years. All I really ask is that businesses with heavy trucks try to reroute your traffic or be patient with the work that's going on there. That's gonna be quite a, quite a deal. Also like to mention that one of the local businesses, alumnicor, made a very generous donation to the city for purposes of powering the Christmas decorations. I really wanna extend a very heartfelt thank you to them. I do have a Christmas card, a thank you card, excuse me, at the end of the meeting that I think that all the council should, should sign and send to them.
How much was it, Mr. Mayor?
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Then that ain't that much.
More than you've ever given. That's quite well.
I don't think so.
The bottom line is also Sean Novabit graciously donated the old Citizens Bank building across the way to the city. During the coming months, we'll evaluate its future and how it plays into the grand redevelopment plan that we'll be embarking upon. Which brings us to remember about HUD, or in our distressed technical assistance program. And one of their consultants, LIS, which stands for Local Initiative Support Corporation, has been working very closely with Mike and I to put together a plan where we're bringing in some of the key business leaders in town, some, some very well-respected consultants. And LIS will come into town to direct all this, to put together a plan.
Well, you got a comprehensive plan.
And this fits in, well, the comprehensive plan.
So we're gonna have plans on...
Shut up. Let me finish my talk. What this plan will is a way to develop the city. And you have to think about what it takes today to develop a city. It takes people to, that you can market to. One of the things that if you do, if you take a protractor and you draw an eight-mile circle around the center of Menneson, how many people do you think you're gonna run into? It turns out that there are sixty-five thousand people just in the communities, not just talk about all the farms and everything else that it would also include. That's sixty-five thousand people that are potentially market people or a market area for businesses in Menneson. There are even better studies available to the city and to some of this LIS group where they can say, how many people are within a five-minute driving area or a ten-minute driving area of Menneson? And furthermore, they have enough demographic data to say what kinds of products and services that those people are doing. Whether they're buying their stuff at Walmart, or they're buying their stuff at Foodland, or where they buy, where they go out to eat, and all these different things. All this really comes into play into a marketing plan that we will be developing to market the, the future of Menneson. Yeah, demos will continue. We're gonna stay on top of the sewer projects. And it really is all part of a rejuvenated Menneson that we're working for. Also in the agenda night, you'll see motions talking about how we fund some things, such as what was brought to council last time for the basketball court. Well, we, turns out that CDBG will allow us, if we can get a motion passed this evening, to regroup some twenty-eight thousand dollars such that we can get a handicap ramp out front, take care of the basketball court, and carpet some of the offices in the civic center. And that can happen immediately. Immediately upon passing that tonight, we can start moving forward with doing those various things. Last, but perhaps most important, I hope everybody has a very safe and happy New Year. I look forward to great things happening in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'd like to make a motion to approve a change order, number one, for sewer rehabilitation project Phase Three A for Inside Pipe Contracting LLC for the addition of raising three manholes, resetting manhole, cutting one manhole wall, and one additional day of televising to monitor the project in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Sorry. Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve sewer rehabilitation project Phase Three, payment requisition for WEC and certificate number twelve in the amount of five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars and thirty cents for the services provided and work performed in the month of October 2023 on Phase Three A and Three B of the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion for a second reading and approval and final passage of ordinance twelve sixty-six of the City of Menneson, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of municipal government hereinafter set forth during the year 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me make sure everybody understands this. This is our city budget that we did. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion for a second reading and approval and final passage of ordinance twelve sixty-seven of the City of Menneson, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate for 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me also make sure everybody understands that this is what sets the tax rate, the forty-three point one-one mils, which is the same that's been for the last several years. Nothing's changing with that. That's what this motion's about. Is there any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to advertise for professional services and consulting entities to identify and procure grant and funding opportunities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to advertise for the position of engineer in the City of Menneson for duties and responsibilities relative to engineering services with the exception of USDA and Penn Vest sewer and water projects and CDBG project consulting and contracting within the City of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to advertise for the position of CDBG consultant within the City of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve a resolution to authorize and direct the City of Menneson to submit the attached traffic signal maintenance agreement and to submit future modifications to the attached traffic signal, signal maintenance agreement and to submit future applications for traffic signal approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Let me just real quick, make sure everybody understands this. We have always been responsible for taking care of the traffic signals in Menneson, and we've done that historically all along. All PennDOT is saying is, we wanna see it in writing. That's what...
You've had an agreement for every traffic signal whenever they decided they needed to do work for them. This is gonna be a master agreement for all traffic signals.
Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the ARPA account of the City of Menneson to the Menneson Hilltop Number Two Fire Company. The funds will be utilized towards the invoices and quotes provided to council as deemed appropriate and required by the Menneson Hilltop Number Two Fire Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the ARPA account of the City of Menneson to the Menneson Number One Volunteer Fire Department and Relief Association. The funds will be utilized towards invoices and billings for maintenance and upkeep on vehicles by the Menneson Number One Volunteer Fire Department and Relief Association.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll give that to Don.
That's nice of you.
Any questions? Call the roll.
I do have a question or comment.
Okay.
This year, I understand it's a reimbursement, but we didn't quite phrase it that way.
It didn't have to be.
Well, that's not the point I'm making.
Okay.
Okay. So that caused some confusion. I would actually recommend to the council that even that $5,000 that you're going to give us next year, that you see what we spend it on. I don't think we've ever been required to respond to any questions about that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to modify and approve the current CDBG request items to include a handicap ramp at the facility, the Civic Center, correct?
Yes.
The refinishing of the basketball courts and cost-efficient carpeting and flooring at the facility within the expenditure parameters of $26,300.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pass resolution in support of the implementation of the tax anticipation note between the City of Menneson and the CFS Bank of Monahoga Hala, Pennsylvania.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? This is the ten note that we're going for. Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this point, I'd like to ask our Director of Accounts and Finance to read his.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general account in the amount of All invoices are attached to the agenda's attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund account in the amount of $1,236.67. All invoices are attached to the agenda's attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the REC fund account in the amount of $142.40. All invoices are attached as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Liquid Fuels account in the amount of $11,694.57. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Line Usage account in the amount of $536.95. All invoices are attached to this attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
What you have on F on the agenda here is incorrect. I will write, read you the correct motion. It was accidentally left off. Make a motion to pay the following invoice from the Refuge account for $48,517.24. Attachments are under attachment F.
Is there any? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Would you repeat that? You said the Refuge account?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a mispronouncing this, but the attachments is correct. The attachment F is correct.
It's the Refuge bill.
It's the Refuge.
Okay. Shame on you. It better happen again.
Won't happen under your administration, right?
Yeah, definitely would have happened.
Glad he blamed you and not me.
Exactly.
We had a second.
We had a second. No more questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
I did have. That's okay to do, Joe?
Yeah, the attachments are attachment F. This is the Refuge account.
Okay, just make it short. Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Grand Fund in the amount of $20,319.96. All invoices are attached to this attachment to attachment G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to transfer $67,693.49 to the payroll account from the general account for the payroll of the City of Menneson, December 21, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to transfer $14,474.40 from the Grant Fund to the Payroll Account for the Police Pay Bonus transactions from grant procedures from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay from the General Fund account, December 2023, retired employee healthcare benefits in the amount of $9,077.76.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
And these are the following balances in the account as of today. Parks has $44,752.40. Grant Fund has $58,255.72. ARP has $238,493.68. REC account has $5,356.21. Refuge account, now this is for 2024 money, has $121,606.92. Fire escrow has $21,154.71. Liquid Fuels has $10,186.94. Debt service has $786,513.86. Line usage has $767,265.91. Payroll account has $8,191.94. Healthcare account has $3,460.81. And the general account as of today, balance left in the city is a positive $291,182.25. Second year in a row, this council has made it in the black at the end of the year. Congratulations, Council.
Thank you. You can wait till the end. It doesn't matter, you can wait till the end.
I have a question for you, Ron.
Okay.
And the question I'm going to ask is, I saw that we had a positive balance in the Liquid Fuels. Has all the funds that have been expended from the general fund, have they been reimbursed from Liquid Fuels at this point?
No.
How about a meal now?
There's $10,000 left in Liquid Fuels, and the reason I left $10,000 in is we just had a solid order for $7,800. It'll go. We just had a, one of the trucks had $700 of repairs it needed on it.
So it's going to be expended?
Yes, sir, it will.
Very good.
I went, I just.
You're allowed to retain up to 20% too.
But I wanted to make sure we had enough, at least for one or two salt orders in case we needed it.
Understood.
And I yield the floor, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis, do you have anything for us?
Just the streets report. Good evening, everyone. The Streets Department report for November 2023. Picked up garbage and trash in a downtown area twice a week, cold patched several streets in the City of Menneson, placed traffic signs in the City of Menneson, picked up leaves in various locations around the city, marked and administered 30 PA one calls around the city, put up Christmas decorations throughout the city, took the ramp off at the boat launch for the winter season, placed plows and salt spritters on their trucks for the winter, assisted the Parks Department as needed. That is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman John?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, administrative staff, rail office, citizens of Menneson, here's the following report for the Public Safety Department. Parking permit receipts, zero. Parking fines, forfeitures, fits, zero. Parking permit, zero. Miscellaneous collections are the following: copies of police accident reports, $345. Meter bags, $30. Total miscellaneous collections is $375. Court receipts for the district's justice office is the following: vehicle code fines collected, $808.85. Crime codes fines collected, $463.70. City ordinance has collected, $58.70. Code enforcement collected, $218.26. Total receipts from the district's justice office is $1,549.51. Total receipts collected for November 2023, $1,924.51. Citations for November 2023 are the following: 48, year-to-date, 1,029. Magistrate, magistrate receipts, vehicle code 472.29. Crime code 539.29. City ordinance, $4.52. Code enforcement, $22.80 for a total of $1,038.90. Following report for the code activity reports for November 2023: habitation permits, 24. Correction letters, 13. Animal complaints, four. One raccoon, two dogs, and one issue for rats. Misleading complaints, 17. Health inspections, four. Office meetings with residents, eight. Citations issued, four. Hearings, 12. Zoning permits, two. Next will be the following for the Menneson Municipal Fire Chiefs report for November 2023. Vehicle accidents, five. Trash fires, one. Wires down calls, one. Natural gas leaks, three. Medical assistance, one. Automatic fire alarm, six. False alarm, one. Landing zone, two. Standby, two. Electrical fire, two. Cooking fire, one. Calls outside the city: automatic fire alarm, Shawlory, one. Structure fire, Shawlory, two. Structure fire for Carroll Township, one. Automatic fire alarm for North Belvernan, one. Total calls, 30. Total firefighters, 273. Firefires per call, 9.1. Total man hours, 300. The Municipal Chief and the Fire Departments both worked with the Menneson School District on campus, with the campus officer on safety changes within the district. Next will be the Mon Valley Emergency Medical Services report for November 2023. Emergency calls, 153. Fire standbys, 13. Referrals, three. Total incidents, 166. Before I yield the floor, Mayor, I'd like to thank Councilman Don Gregor for his work, his amazing work for the four years that he was here. I appreciate all your duties and what you've done for the City of Menneson, and thank what you've done for the city of Menneson, and thank you for being a good friend. I yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Gregor, how's your tents?
Oh, it's my last one. Yes, Parks and Public Property reports were December 2023. Picked up leaves and debris throughout the parks, assisted with installation of Christmas lights, cleaned and assisted at the civic center when possible, repaired picnic tables around the park, assisted the street department as required. That is the extent of my report.
I would like to point out that you are still councilman until we swear in on the first of January, so you're still on the hook.
January 2nd.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on items related to business, statutes, codes, ordinance, and resolutions in operations of the city of Menneson.
This is very important.
He needs to be first.
It is very important. Now, you made a big applause for Lumisource for giving $2,500 for the electric bill for their lights.
On top of their taxes, on top of their employment taxes.
Okay. Can anyone tell me how much is the electric bill for the city of Menneson?
Which one? It's broken down in different places.
Okay, the streets, I guess, for the lights.
I mean, there's.
About streetlights.
Parks pays a percentage, the city hall pays a percentage.
Okay, I'm not asking who's paying. I'm asking what's the total bill?
Monthly?
Monthly or yearly? Is it over $200,000, $300,000?
Not monthly.
No, no, I said the whole year.
Uh, it's probably around, it's probably around 18, 17,000 a month.
17,000 a month, so we're over.
I mean, I'm rounding this off.
Yeah, okay. I'm not going to hold you to that figure. What I'm trying to say is this: we've got a budget for electricity over a million dollars a year, and he's jumping up and down to $2,500. And I'm going to tell you something else. You guys got a short memory. Lumisource paid Trump to come here $450,000. So what are we, peanuts?
Let's get back to.
The problem is this: for years, you guys have been catering, panhandling the big boys. And then when you need money, you come down on the little people who pay their duties to pay property and school tax. This has got to stop. That's all I know. And I'm going to tell you something. Why, why are you going to smooth that Coke plant? You said they've got five tunnels underneath? Who's going to pick up the town? We are, the taxpayers. Now, over the course of 40 years, council did what? All these companies on the riverbank got their taxes reduced. The Coke plant used to pay 28 years ago $182,000 in property and school tax. You know what it's been now for the last 10 years? $10,400. And you guys are going to put it on the people's back to do all the repairs under their thing. And then you say, well, they've got $770 million plant, and then they could only afford $2,500 to give to the city for electricity when our bill is over 1.8 million a year? This is bullshit. You guys got to put things in proper perspective. You don't talk to us like a preacher. It's church, and you smooth other thing that Jesus and God's going to take care of us.
Okay, let's keep, wind it up.
Can I just follow him for one second?
Yeah, go ahead.
You're absolutely correct about the Coke plant, but that wasn't done by city council. That was done by the county. Now, you want to blame council for some things?
Well, the council.
Let me finish.
Okay.
You want to blame us for a lot of other stuff? Yeah, you know what? We probably did it. But that four or five million dollars that we've lost since then, that was done to us by the county. It wasn't done to us by anybody here or the previous councils.
Did the county put a fight?
And when the county did.
Did the council put a fight? No.
You don't fight.
No, you don't fight?
You lose. We did fight.
What's the administration?
We took them to court. What did it cost us?
Who did you take to court?
Do you remember how much that cost us, the city?
Who did you take to court, the Coke plant?
Yeah, and we lost.
Okay, what was it based on?
I'm assuming it was their tax assessment appeal.
Yeah. We went after them on that, and we lost. And it cost us, the last time I heard someone told me it was like 60,000, between 60 and $100,000. We lost. So don't tell me we haven't fought.
Did you file an appeal?
And we lost.
Did you file an appeal?
And we lost. What don't you understand?
Well, maybe you were dealing with the wrong judge.
Like we get to pay.
The judges are very crooked. I'm going to tell you that.
Slow down, slow down.
Okay, but anyway, I've got two more things here. One, what have we decided on taking the burden of the insurance on this library board? Did we go anywhere with that? It's been like three months. I've been.
I've been working with Dave Zilka on that very issue, and we will resolve that. I'm working with him.
When? His bill's due $2,400 on January 5th, so when are you going to resolve it? Over the New Year's party or what? Now, this is something else. You guys keep telling me you're resolving it, resolving it. I was also told for three weeks in a row that you were going to have cake here from Mr. Don Gregor, and all you did was you give empty words. Thank you for your service. Actions speak louder.
Well, first off, folks, January 2nd. He's still on service till the end.
Okay, well, I'm going to hold you to it, and I want everybody to see how you guys really come through with what you say.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
And it won't come out of your tax dollars either.
Yeah, I like to have some cake.
It'll be there on the second.
Okay.
We're in the city of Menneson.
Just one last thing. Where is the money going to be spent for the town? Like, what areas you pay?
All the same things, just to cover the bills that we have, just like we have tonight.
You're lumping everything together. If you can't tell me, so much money that that's going to go here, so much.
It's going to go to the general fund. That's the first thing.
The general fund is the piggyback that you guys go in and run.
That's what paid most, the biggest bill today. That's the way it works.
Well, why don't you be a little bit more transparent and then break it down a little bit so we can see?
Ernie, how much more flipping transparent can I possibly be?
Well, where's the money going to go to? Because we may think.
It maintains the city until we get taxes.
It pays the payroll. It pays gas. It pays fuel for the police cars. It pays.
It pays the police cars. It pays everything.
It pays everything.
Payroll.
Okay, this is one last thing I'm going to say. In the city code class, the classed code 3, the controller, the treasurer, and the accounting guy, finance guy, they're supposed to have an accounting degree. You guys have been getting away with it for many, many years.
We meet all the requirements according to third-class city code.
No, no, they have to be qualified as an accountant. You can't hold these positions. Try to have those positions in a private industry.
How many years have you worked as an accountant?
25.
There you go. What more experience do you have to have?
Do you have an accounting degree, Russell?
It doesn't say you have to have an accounting degree. It says you have to be an experienced accountant, accounting.
Is that what it says?
That's what it says.
That you have to have experience only, not an accountant?
Eight years.
Does not say CPA.
Does not say CPA.
The treasurer has to have a CPA.
It does not say that at all. You can show it to me, but it doesn't. I've read it many times. Please do.
Yeah, because the public is getting shortchanged with all these little items that aren't spelled out. Okay, so your authority gets stretched and stretched.
You have not found us anything that you've been able to substantiate yet.
It's up to the public. They've got to see through all these bells.
You've got to have the truth behind it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Lacy, 1624 Maple Avenue. The question I have for Tony, what was in the Parks account?
You can make me go through and find my machine.
See, they should have let me ask that when we were doing it. Okay. Now, where did that money come from?
It was allocated through taxes. There's allocations.
Who's taxes?
Your taxes.
Of the 43.11 mils you pay, 8 point, excuse me.
That was in Parks and Recreation or in Parks?
I don't remember the exact number. Well, let's talk about that for a few minutes. There are, there are four funds that you're taxed for when you get your, your city tax bill. There's the general fund. That's 29.99 mils. By law, it has to be less than 30 mils. So we're right at the limit of what we can do for that. Then, our debt service is 8.14 mils. That's to pay the bonds and the loans we have for the bonds from years gone by. That maybe need to be adjusted, and we will work on that this coming year to see if that needs to be changed. The library gets 8.87 mils. So 0.87 mils of the tax revenue that they get goes directly to the library. The Parks and Recreation gets 4.11 mils. That's what we passed today.
Okay, which brings me to a question that was on the agenda. Here's your pen or your.
Sorry.
That was on the agenda, September 28th, where you and the council said that the civic center amount was going to be reduced from $44,775 to $13,459.
That's CDBG. That's CDBG. Let's make sure we understand that.
Right. Okay, I understand that. So where's this $29,000 coming to play at?
There's.
If you already had allocated that money to go to fix the floors, to fix the kitchen, and do the handicap ramp, that was in September that you stated that's what you was going to do.
Right.
And it never got done.
Well, they, they got on order of the kitchen equipment, to the best of my knowledge, to get that going. That's ordered. And we have, as of today, we will get the handicap ramp, and we will get the basketball court refinished and carpeting in the offices with remaining 28,000 or 20, whatever the number was.
Well, now, my question is.
What about the what?
Kitchen.
The kid, it's on order. It'll be there as soon as it comes in.
To install.
Okay, but from that $44,775, that 29,000 that you were talking about, the 26,000 is coming out of that?
I believe so, yes. The rest of it went to the kitchen.
The rest of what?
That 44,000.
That 26,000.
Yeah, that's CDBG. Wait, wait, wait.
Well, he's.
None of the, none of the Parks and Recreation money goes to that. That takes care of the lawns, the snowplows, the streets.
What does?
The 44,000 that Tony was talking about.
According to what you said in September, you said you were going to reduce that amount that was going to the civic center. That was supposed to be CDBG money.
That's CDBG. You're getting numbers crisscrossed. You're getting numbers crisscrossed.
No, I'm looking red at it.
Yeah, but in September, we're talking CDBG funds.
Correct.
And we reallocated some funds there because we couldn't do some, certain things there. But we've got it such that we're doing the kitchen, we're doing the basketball court, we're doing carpeting, and we're doing the handicap ramp.
That was all stated in your September agenda, that that's what you were going to do them, do. And the only thing that was left that was going to the civic center was the $13,459. And you're saying now that the 26,000 is going to take care of that. Well, there's still some money that's somewhere that's not being utilized. Where is that? Because out of 44,000, and you're taking the 26 out of there, and you only gave it to 13,000 was left for the civic center, where's the rest of it?
Well, I'd invite you to come up, and we'll go through this tomorrow, and we'll figure it all out. Because you got me so confused with.
Well, no, I was basically wondering, because what you said in September, I thought was going to be done already.
Well, we actually.
Because that's what it said in September.
They actually went out for bids, and they got no bids whatsoever. They came back and said, well, since we got no bids, we can, we can make a choice without going for bids.
Okay, wait, hold on. Hold on one second. Okay, Lois is in charge of public property?
I am.
He is.
I am.
Your Parks and Recreation?
I am.
Your Streets?
He's part of some public property.
Your Parks and Recreation, public improvement in everything.
Yes.
And so Nestor is safety. So out of all three, you just couldn't get estimates for what needed to be done down at the civic center?
Yeah, because no one wanted to do it.
Well, that's not an excuse, Don. You know that.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm not attacking you, but that's not an excuse.
What I'm telling you is this: if no, if we advertise, and no one comes and puts a bid in, what are we supposed to do? You have to advertise again, right?
You, you get in your car, and you go out and find a place that does it, and get estimates for it.
They can't do that. That's illegal. That's illegal. You're not allowed to do that.
You're not allowed to do that. It's illegal.
You mean, city council can't go?
It's illegal.
And get the price of a paint?
It's illegal.
Or to refinish stuff? Okay, well, what does the board do? Okay, what does the board do?
Just what we did tonight. We allocate money.
No, no, what does the rec center board do?
Nothing.
No.
Well, what am I saying? Are they authorized to go get estimates to do these things?
No.
No. These were, this was a CDBG project.
Correct.
There are regulations that the city has to follow. They have a consultant that takes them through those regulations. So it was advertised, I think, twice.
Well, in the paper?
In the paper.
I didn't see it.
In big paper or real paper?
A paper.
A paper. So.
Okay, my question.
Let me, let me finish explaining. So, once that was done, no bids were put in. The consultant had to send a letter to DCED, somebody in Harrisburg, saying, hey, we have this project, funds are allocated. Nobody put a bid in. Through him, the city got authorization to go out and, it's called single-source purchasing, right?
It's in a different paper, though.
Who, who did that? Who went and got the estimates for that? Who did the?
Urban Design Ventures is currently the CDBG consultant for the city.
Okay.
Took them through the process to enable, and it took a couple of months because, you know, bidding takes time. They were able to go out and get pricing for things under the authorization.
What about the guy you asked to come down and give an estimate on the civic center?
For which part?
For what?
Matt? We can discuss about the civic center.
Are you talking about the floor? The issues with the floor? The basketball court? That's going to be part of this now.
Now we can actually move forward with that.
Yeah.
And when you're going to do it?
As fast as we can do it.
They needed the approval tonight, that the council voted on tonight to be able to move forward with that.
I thought somebody was bullshitting me.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's going to come up to $26,000?
That's the limit of the money we have. That's the limit. We can't spend more than that.
Well, where's the rest of the 44 going to? That's what I'm trying to say.
The rest of the 44 went to the kitchen.
All right, so the kitchen, the handicap ramp, and the floor.
And the carpet.
And the carpeting. Oh, the carpeting was something added new because it wasn't in there on September.
We think we can do it under that number.
So you do all that for the 26, Don?
That's what we're doing.
Yes.
So 44, kitchen was the 13. So 13 and the 26.
No, 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 no. If you look on here, it says $44,775 was reduced. The only thing that the civic center got was the $13,459.
You're getting the 26 too. The 26 is for the civic center.
But if you add 26, what I'm saying is, if you add $26,300 to the $13.459, does not come to 44.
That's probably true because that's changed.
No, you have to look at all the years, too. I don't, I really don't know what you're looking at. You're looking at a small part.
I'm looking at your addenda from September 28th.
Still, I don't know, I don't understand what that is unless I have all the accounting there. That is not there. It does not matter. That is not all the accounting.
The 44 that is not on here is carpet.
Fine, but it does not have all the accounting from CDBG. That is a shifting number all the time.
Was it purpose taken to reduce that money?
Yeah.
We removed, we moved.
We were here in September.
That was on one particular year money.
Because it's getting done.
There is money for different years, for different amounts, different categories.
Yeah, but that money you said was allocated for the civic center, and it's going to be reduced down to that $13,000 figure.
That's so we could do, that was so we could do the handicap ramp.
It's 26,000.
Yeah, but all that was in here.
It obviously changes between September and now.
You need to go back and look at your September 28th addenda because it's all written in here.
You approved the minutes. So if you approved the minutes, they're in the minutes.
And Ernie, you made me forget what else I had to say because you was all over the place.
You should have kept the.
Oh, you said that we have to take money and send it up there to the amphitheater or work on the amphitheater and use the amphitheater. How much does it cost to rent the amphitheater?
I think it's $100.
No, it's not.
Okay, what is it?
It's more than that. No, it's not.
What is it?
Council dropped the prices.
It's like 300. When did they drop the price?
Council dropped prices beginning of the year because we felt that nobody was using it.
The beginning of what year? You mean the beginning of 2024?
20, we ain't in 24 yet. 23.
I know we're not, because last year it wasn't that. To rent that amphitheater was like $300.
We dropped that price. I could swear we did. Because nobody was using, nobody was renting it. We just figured $100, that's better than nothing.
Well, I think $300 was a little much anyway.
Mike can check because he has a list of all the required charges, like if you want to rent.
Well, $300 is entirely too much to rent any provision in the city.
I'm not arguing with you, but I'm just, let's see.
I'm just making a statement.
Give them a chance to see what it really is.
Well, I'm just saying, when I first heard it, $300 is entirely too much to rent the amphitheater.
I don't disagree.
And if you're going up there to do repairs on it, put some more electrical plugs up there. Build something so where if somebody comes here, they have a place to change and go to the bathroom and stuff.
Okay, but let's get something.
So do that improvement.
But let's get something straight. Nobody here, nobody on this council said repairs. I said, this is a project that I am.
You said improvements.
Meaning the projector.
To mean that somebody can utilize that place.
Meaning maybe the projector for movies in the park or something. That's what I meant by improvement, so I'm sorry. Maybe I have to classify this down to my wording. But there's no repairs that I know of that need done to the amphitheater.
I didn't say there, I said, I said improvements. I didn't say.
Yeah, there's a, you need to get a French drain up there to stop the flooding and the mud coming down in the amphitheater.
And more electrical plugs, and you should get something, if it's going to be an amphitheater, you should have a section that where you can do, it doesn't have to be like, it could be a size cargo area to where people can change into a costume or go to the bathroom without charging all the way up the hill.
You might want to speak to the people that designed it and actually put it together then.
They're first off.
Well, no, it's, they're gone. It's our problem now. It's, it's in our city park.
So.
So whoever gets in Don's position, that's who they need to talk to.
Well, they still haven't repaired that wall that was knocked over by the automobile.
That's the big problem.
That's, it's a rental fee. And I don't think it's $300.
No.
It is because I wrote the check for, for DCED.
Who?
Yeah.
For who?
The Menneson community is here. We paid $300 for that.
For that what?
For amphitheater.
That's amphitheater.
That was this year?
Okay.
I wrote the check.
This year?
Yeah, nothing.
Okay, we'll find out.
Okay, this is my.
We'll find out.
Okay, this is my issue.
I know I wrote the check, and I'll tell you, there's right check statement up the mouth. I got the book for you.
Mike, Mike can touch base with you and find out where I want to go.
That's 10-11 in the Treasury Department.
Okay, I just have another comment to make. Some of you, no, no. I'll say that after New Year's. Some of you council members are originally from Menneson and some are not. But you lived here long enough to understand how Menneson works. And if you're on city council and you only come to a meeting twice a month, it looks to me, if you were elected into this position and you want to help improve our city, it looks like you might want to get in your car and drive around your city and see what is going on in your city. So you'll have a better respect of what's going on here. And then when we, as residents, come down here complaining and upset about something, you'll understand why.
Okay, I'm not sure how you want me to answer.
Well, I want you to get in your car and drive around and see what we see every day.
I go throughout the city, so I, I know I'm throughout the city all the time, whether up, down, below.
Okay, Lois, you're only one person, but you don't never get on the phone and call any of the other council members and say, oh, I was down here on Scootemaker. This is happening.
Oh, no, they know. If I see someone, if I get a call, they get the call. Believe me, they get that. If somebody calls me right, before I left here, they would get that call immediately. I don't wait till the next day.
That's true. And I've had people call me at home who had a street issue that either I've had to contact Mike or sometimes Don or Lois.
Well, maybe that's what we should do as residents. Call up our city council and tell them, look at this.
We never told you not to do that.
Was your number posted?
I'm sure Mike, I'm sure Mike can give you the number if he wants. Now, Don's is done.
How are the citizens going to call? You said they could call us anytime.
Pick up a phone, you call. It's not different. If you have a question to a county commissioner, you can get through to them, I'm sure. They may take a message, but I'm sure somebody will want to get back to you.
Our county commissioner, we're not worried about Westmoreland County. We're worried about Menneson.
Well, you should be worried about everything because that's where most of the, most of the money comes flowing through. They control a lot of stuff.
We live here, in the city of Menneson. That's what I'm saying. I know we're under Westmoreland County, but we live in this city.
And they came, they campaign here too, don't they? Do they? They do. Darn right they do.
I'm sure they do campaign here. Oh, and I have one more question, and then I'll sit down. Did you resolve, I'm talking to the whole panel now, did you resolve that issue that was, that grant where we had to pay a portion and Lumisource had to pay a portion? Did we fix that? And how did that happen that none of you knew about it?
We knew.
Well, not, well, you may know now, but when it first came up, you just didn't know.
The, the R cap explanation is that what you, we would like to give here?
And I don't know if you were here.
Yeah, we knew. The R cap was originally done by the city of Menneson and Lumisource for the first round. They did not receive funding. In the second year of funding, the city of Menneson was replaced by the Industrial Development Corporation of Westmoreland County. They were not approved in year two. The third year, they used RC, agent.
The third year, they used RC, AJO, I just wanna get a, Redevelopment Corporation of Westmoreland.
Okay.
They were approved in that year. The parties that are responsible for the R cap are those two. And in discussions with the governor's office, we have no liability on this, or don't have to be a part of the agreement.
Okay.
We are out of it. Other than, other than the money.
It must not have been a cooperative grant? Because when, we were here discussing it, excuse me mayor, when we were here discussing it, Tony said that he had seen a bill, but he didn't know what it was for.
It had nothing to do, the R cap grant is not a grant that the city provides any money.
But if we got involved with a grant, and Lumisource got involved with a grant, how'd they get a grant without us knowing it? And we were a part of it.
We knew what was happening, Linda, but we were no longer a part of the transaction. When they replaced us with the Industrial Development Corporation of Westmoreland, we were out. We, in the first year, were, were the party of interest of the agreement, but we did not get funding. So Lumisource decided to use the new entity, and we were replaced.
But if I recall, the grant wasn't for the city of Menneson, it was for Lumisource.
It is, and R cap is for that party, with the benefit of.
But why, why did we get involved in it then?
We did the first.
We had to.
The, the administration that was in, when the first R cap was put in, got involved in that way. They were replaced in the second year, and Menneson was replaced, and then the third year.
But Tony was still getting bills for it.
No, different issue. R cap and the Section 108 loan that was given in another administration to Lumisource is a different issue. And that's been resolved, that, that is closed. So there's no liability on the Section 108 loan that was done in another administration. And I can get you the paperwork to show you all of it.
Well, according to how those grants work, both parties have to be involved. Are you saying that Lumisource took care of everything, but just had our signature on it?
Which, which one, or the Section 108 loan was done?
I don't know, it's the one that Lumisource paid part of it off. But see, he, we were here, I think in September or October, whenever it surfaced, that we had a connection to Lumisource, and nobody seemed to have known about that grant deal. But you just didn't know.
No, what, what we didn't know is who they replaced Menneson with in year two and three. And we weren't following it after year one, Linda. It was, it was, but I can, I'll show you the whole packet on, if you come up, R cap and the Section 108. Two different transactions, both are settled. We have no liability on either one.
Okay, that may be now, because everything is paid off, but before it wasn't.
No. In the R cap scenario, we were replaced in year two, so we were out. And the Section 108 loan, when they closed that deal and he paid that loan off, we had no liability then, at that point. But that was, that was incurred in another administration.
I, I'm well, I'm well aware of what administration is, and then that's when they said they didn't know.
Who, who? Who said they didn't?
Mr. Orkowski.
It was before I ever got on council. It was before Lou ever got to be mayor.
Right.
It was prior to that.
Right. The Section 108 was done prior to that.
You mean that grant was like for like five years or four years?
It was not a grant, that was a loan.
That was a loan.
Section 108 was a loan.
The grant.
The grant is the R cap grant that I said, Burn was.
Let me just interject here, real quick, very simply, and this is not all, everything it is, but this is the majority of it. R cap, basically, fifty percent is put up by a nonprofit. So you have to have a nonprofit involved with this. Fifty percent is put up by the state. If the state's gonna put money into it, they want local participation. And that's where the county, the city, or whatever the locality is, is there. But they are simply a beneficiary of, they've gotta show that what the state's money is gonna benefit the locality. That's the only purpose of that.
Why were we getting the bill then?
You're talking about, there was a loan that was out there, right?
With Lumisource, or for Lumisource?
It was for Lumisource, that was the HUD 108, Section 108.
Okay, cause, okay.
Hold on, let me finish.
Alright.
That, that started, I believe, in twenty, between twenty-ten and twenty-twelve, right? That, that's when that loan originated. The city would, and you're talking about the BNY Mellon bills that came here saying that the city has to pay on about two and a half million dollars, and the bill would be coming due. Well, Lumisource was the one who paid that bill. So I believe you're talking Tony's first term as a councilman. That's when the issue first came up.
But Lumisource got that because of Menneson, correct?
Correct, the city of Menneson pledged their CDBG funds as collateral, essentially. This summer, Lumisource paid off that loan. That loan is no longer here.
It's done.
Okay, yeah. That's, that's my point.
That's a good thing.
And they gave us twenty-five hundred dollars, and we saved their butt so they can rehabilitate their plant. You know what?
But if you wanna come up and look at the documents, so that we can do that. Mr. Faulk.
Ed LaFever, nineteen Keystone Drive. Just a question about the two hundred thousand dollars in that rescue fund. I remember, I think it was the last council meeting, when the budget was discussed, that someone, maybe you did, Tony, you mentioned, hey, you never know when something comes up, and it, it just messes up the, the budget. So, my suggestion is, don't spend that money on roads, don't spend that money on police cars. Put that money in a, 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 some sort of an account that creates interest. Then if something does happen that you haven't accounted for.
First of all, one, it's bearing interest right now, because we moved to see a community, a charter or a federal.
Why spend it?
That's one. Two, that wasn't your grandfather hitting the lottery and making you rich one day. It was money given by the federal government for specific projects and requirements. You just can't sit it there forever and ever and ever.
Well, what, what's the time limit?
It has to be spent, it has to be spent too.
It has to be spent by next year. And one of the points, the people don't under, I don't wanna say don't understand, I wouldn't expect anybody to have to worry about this, but that art money, when we were supposed, specific, and things we've talked about tonight, for using it for and all that, okay? We can get audited by the federal government at that art money. And council puts its name on those expenditures. Rosa Lee and I signed the checks. We're responsible, okay? We have to make sure it's done correctly.
Oh, I understand that.
And there's no saving it for a rainy day, because it's going to wear out.
Okay, then.
They'll want it back.
In other words, all the members should actually go in a roundtable and actually discuss this, instead of throwing things out, like roads and et cetera, et cetera. Really come down to a firm, a firm agreement as to what is the best way to spend this money.
I thought that's what I brought out during new business, that this was a discussion, then maybe this council still, and somebody else.
We just had that discussion, and he also said that after the first of the year, the new council will continue that discussion.
Well, I'm saying, do you get together and discuss that?
No, you can't do that. You have to do it in a public forum, advertise that you're going to do it. Because if you do it the other way, that's a violation of the sunshine.
I thought executive, executive council meeting? You can't do that. You can't do that.
No. Executive's only for personnel.
Personnel.
That's illegal.
Illegal.
Everything we do is out in front of you, for business and things like that, except for something with personnel.
Well, let me ask, okay, you've answered my question. The other one, did I not hear last month that the city possibly was in, in debt for a hundred ninety-two? And now, what is the figure saying in the black?
Two hundred ninety-one thousand.
How, how did that materialize in thirty days?
Didn't materialize in thirty days. As of August or September, towards October, I was feeling that we would not have enough money because of the MMO responsibility and some other things. We got some real estate taxes in that I was not aware of, being very honest. We also got, was it sixty-five thousand, or was it fifty-five thousand, from the one sale?
And that was thanks to Lumisource, by the way.
That was a Lumisource sale.
Some fifty thousand dollars we got.
I was not aware of that at all, okay? I will tell you the same thing I tell everybody else up here, and they know me by now, and that is, I deal with numbers that I am dealing with day to day. I look and see what the balances are day to day, what our expenditures are, and I go by that.
Well, what happened is, that article came out in the local paper, and I, I imagine some residents thought, wow, we're a hundred ninety-two thousand in, in the red?
At the time, before we did all those things.
So you're going, so this week you're going to put in the paper?
I'm not putting anything in the paper.
Well, is anyone putting?
I'm just reporting to you facts.
Okay, how about the public? Will they know this by the first of the year that the city is in the black?
No, they'll know by tomorrow, probably in the paper, I guess.
Okay, that, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, we do the best we can to come to a positive aspect of this.
No, I'm just saying, informing, I'm not, I'm not criticizing here, I'm just saying, informing the public, they're, they have read, it's in the red in November, now it's in, it's, it's in the black in, in December. I'm just saying, the public should know that, and I guess tonight the public will know it, in tomorrow's newspaper.
That's what a public meeting is for.
Well.
No, that's what you're here for.
No, no, I'm talking about six thousand residents in the city of Menneson. I mean, tomorrow they will find out we're in the black.
Most likely it'll be in the paper.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, we don't control that.
Okay, I understand. Let me, I, I want to mention something about mileage. I, I guess you all read about, pardon me, you all read about Westmoreland Commissioners. They have a self-imposed cap of twenty-five, so now they met it. So they're at their cap, you know, and that's controlled by the state. So now, they are so inept, that they had to rush and go to their cap to, to control their finances. What I don't understand is this. I looked up for the local, the maximum mileage rate for cities and boroughs in Westmoreland County. Menneson is at local forty-three point one-one, school is at eighty-four point eight-two, and now the county is at twenty-five. So the caps, taxes, property owners, for Menneson, it's capped now. School tax, capped. County, capped. Now what?
Go to court, pay off the raising, or you manage your budget.
You manage your budget.
That's all you do, you manage your budget.
No, wait a minute, I'm just asking.
Well, you don't ask the right question then.
I'm asking where, you're saying, I'm asking where the money will come from now, when these state-imposed caps are in place? It's going to take a lot of scrutinizing the figures in order to stay afloat, because, for example, the money being issued by the county for tearing down different, don't you think that's going to be somewhat limited now for Menneson?
No, that's art money.
That's our money.
Is that all our money?
That's all our money, given by the federal government that they must use it all.
Okay, but I'm still, I'm still confused, school, local, where does the money come from now for any improvements?
From the taxpayer.
From that very money you're talking about.
The city's been operating under their cap for their general fund.
I understand.
Twenty-nine point nine-nine since twenty-nineteen?
Easy.
Probably before.
We raised it in twenty-nineteen.
It was twenty-nineteen.
Okay, well, you're capped now at forty-three.
We've been capped. We've been capped. We function under that. It's no different at home, you got so much money, you get your social security, if that, and a pension or something else. This is what you get, you're capped.
I understand that, that's, that's my question. What I'm saying is this. I don't trust financial figures, because they seem to change. Just for example, you said in November, it was in the red, in December, it's in the black. It's how figures change. So, I, I'm just not confident in not only Menneson.
Tony, those numbers are straight from the bank account, correct?
Exactly. Okay, the bottom line is, and I'm just gonna go out and say this, and I'm not here to offend anybody, but I would think you'd be damn happy that we worked so damn hard as a council to be in the black. It amazes me how people, some people can get so irate or pissed off or whatever. What do you want? Look in the, I looked in the paper this morning, was it Elizabeth Township or somebody had a tax increase and all that? What the, you want? We stayed within our cap.
I understand.
Stayed within our, no, no, I have the floor.
No, I want, I wanna see the, the, the word, I wanna see.
There's nothing you can see, that's the way government is, that's the way you pay your taxes. That's how we keep the lights on every day.
No, if you came, if you came up with this figure of in the black, I would like to see how you came up with that figure.
I log onto a bank account. I log onto a bank account, and it has a big nice figure in there, or a small little figure.
You did, how do I do it?
It's been reported in accounts meeting every single time, by someone.
Do you think he's lying to you?
No, I do not.
Do you think he's lying to you?
No, I do not.
He just told you, he logged onto the bank account, no, no, hold on. He just told you, he logged onto the bank account, looked at the numbers of what's in the city bank account.
I, I'm a person, I wanna see it.
You don't have access to it.
No.
You don't, you're not going to get access to it, because you're not a government official that requires you to have access to it.
If you wanna be.
But he, he tells you every two weeks what's in there.
And I'm, I'm.
And you're here every, and you're supposed.
And I'm supposed to totally, totally trust you.
That's your truth.
That's up to you.
It's up to you.
That's up to you.
He can tell you the truth, and if you choose to believe it, fine, if you don't, fine.
How do, how do I know he's telling me the truth?
I guess you just have to figure that one out. I guess you're gonna have to figure that one out. Because when it comes to money, Tony tells the truth. Trust us.
I doubt, I doubt politicians. One other thing, mayor. Here's a suggestion. In January, you know, like the president gets the state of the union.
I will do one.
Will you do the state of the city?
I will do the state of the city.
Okay.
You already had your chance.
Mr. LaFever? How do I know you're telling the truth? You don't mean nothing to me, you don't have any paperwork to back you up, you don't have any bank account. You could scribble on that all day. Pino might have scribbled on it before he came in the meeting. You didn't show me nothing. That's what he says. You didn't show me nothing. Numbers lie, numbers lie. Didn't you just say that up here? Numbers lie. You did.
Pardon me?
You said numbers lie.
Yes, they do.
So why should I look at your figures?
Well, you agree, but all those figures are correct.
Can we move on?
That's not really a fair question, just hold for two seconds.
We've known that for two years. We've been capped since two thousand nineteen and going to twenty, because myself, Lois was there, and Dave Feehan turned around and very agonizingly had to raise taxes, because we couldn't make it. Okay, we've been capped since then. We've been all living under that for all these years. We're still gonna continue to do that for a couple more years.
Should you appeal the cap?
Yeah, they could send, they could send the solicitor to court, asking the court to raise the, the tax cap.
And I guarantee, if we did that, this place would be packed so far outside saying, we're raising taxes. We're trying to save the city money.
They've avoided it since twenty-nineteen. Probably should give them some credit for doing so. Is that a criticism?
I don't, absolutely.
Everybody on this, everybody on this council busts their butt to turn around, that they watch every penny that they spend, because they know I'm gonna ask them about every penny they spend, okay? Because we're responsible for every, I've said this ten thousand times, we're responsible to you, all of you, and every penny that you put forward. We take it very seriously, every one of us on this council. And I quite frankly, I think it's actual, actually kind of alarming that people would even look at us and go, is this true? Is this really true? Do you think this is right? You're a pilot to your opinion, but I, I kinda look at it as a slang and a slap in the face to what. Trust me, do you want this job? Because I'll tell you what, they'll tell you. There's not many people, nobody up here don't want this, okay? This is a constant everyday job. Rosa Lee busts her butt to watch her stuff on top of it. Dawn and everybody else busts their butt for $92 every two weeks. Yeah, it's a thankless job, but it'd be nice to hear a, hey, thanks guys. I really appreciate how the end of the year was. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, can we go on?
Well, my lord. Can I anoint you?
Name is Peanut, 45 month laborer, 1-5-0-6-2. I gotta ask a question for, did you ask about the $2,500 that they gotta give to them?
Oh, no, I didn't ask about the rent.
You might ask.
For rent down at the civic center.
Because that was brought up. Where's that, when do the city, the civic center gives you the $2,500 to you guys and for what?
$2,500?
Every three months?
Oh, when they collect it, and they collect it and they don't get it, I believe, all in one long shot, I believe, and that's the treasury department. It goes to the treasury department.
Why do they have to give it back when they need the money to operate? That's my question.
So we can pay their bills.
Like, what bill do they have?
Electric, gas, water.
Okay, but at one time they used to pay their own bill, am I correct?
No.
They always paid to the city.
The civic center, you're confusing the issues. The civic center's the city's building, and I'll get to what you're speaking of. The midget league basketball is running it, and they've done that for decades. But at one time, there was a recreation authority. They were standalone from council, and they did pay their own bills at the time.
Okay, I'm just gonna go take it one little step further. Let's say the library, do they pay their own bill?
What's their own bill?
Electricity.
Yes, they pay their own electricity.
So whatever they get?
They get $50,000 as from the 0.8% tax. So they have 50,000, anything else they get through fundraising and anything else, or donations, that's what they get.
Okay, what is the difference between, I'm just curious. What's the difference between the library and the civic center?
The library actually has a mileage that was their charge for. You, part of your tax bill you pay, when you pay your tax bill, goes directly to the library. That's not the case with the civic center.
Okay, but at the end, he just said it a minute ago, they collect money through fundraiser. However they collect money, they keep it.
Correct.
What's the difference there?
The city operates the civic center, the city. The library board operates the library, that's the difference.
The civic center has a board, am I correct?
That's a recreation board, it's supposed to take care of recreation across the city.
So they don't control, so you guys control all the money?
They don't have a mileage rate that's assigned to them.
So the library is controlled by the library law. There is a state statute that controls, hold on, let me finish, it's part of the explanation. How they control the library, it's set by code. It's different than the city's building, the civic center. The city pays the electric bill, the city pays the gas bill, the city pays the water bill.
But then they used to pay, you used to pay the electric bill and the gas?
It was operated differently at some time. Right now, that is how it's operated. It's a whole, whole different issue. But right now, the city pays the bill.
I, believe me, I know that they're different issues, okay? I'm talking about, they collect money, they get to keep it. How do the city, how do the, how do the, how do the civic center, those young kids, that we're trying to keep them out of the street, right? And keep them busy? And keep them occupied? Why do they have to return money when they need money to operate? $2,500, let me tell you something. $2,500 a, every quarter, I think it is, from January till, I think the guy used the number, February, January till May or something, that they collect most of that money. But when they collect all that money, they gotta give it back to the city. And I think, that's, that's just my opinion, I think it's wrong. If you really care about the city, if you really care about young men to grow up to be men, you gotta act like a man. Meaning, the money that they hustle to get in the place there, because those guys, they come in from out of town or whatever, the Middle East, they don't come here by accident. They're actually being marketed by some young kid to have them come in. And I don't think he's being treated right. That's my opinion. I listened to him several times come in here. And even though the answer that you guys give him, it's a good answer, to me, it's an alibi. The way I look at it, he's a black kid, screw him. Let him tell him whatever he wants to hear, and move on. I'm just telling you my opinion.
You're done, you're done, you're done, sit down.
Why am I done?
You exceeded the limits, at that point you're done.
Oh, yeah, you do that every time. The last month
No, no, sit down, sit down, sit down.
The last time, you stood there and said, you said every word in the goddamn book, name, calling people, you stood there and then
I never call him back.
You made the sign of the cross at the redevelopment meeting. You lie every goddamn time.
No, sit down, sit down, sit down.
You said not a damn word.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I thought you could do it, it's a jerk.
The next meeting.
But we work hard to get the fun out of here.
Aye, the meeting's over. No, the meeting's over. He ruined it. No, not in this meeting.